Okay. Good evening, everyone, to the Pittsburgh Common Council for the February 27, 2024 meeting. So the first thing is to call to the order to the meeting at 7:30. Please stand up for the pleasure of allegiance. Okay. Next roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Rada Prada here. Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Hertz.
Here.
Alder Jetser.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Strassmann.
Here.
Alder Udall.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a corner, Mayor.
Thank you. So next we move to item number four, public appearances or non-agenda item of new appointments. And now we have a new appointment that I bring it forward. So for the Board of Review, I am appointing Richard Blunkquist. So do I have a...
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So, Richard, can you come to the microphone and tell us, you know, a little bit about yourself? I want to mention that I know Richard. He live in District Two. He was an alder of District Two. And I replaced him when he left the council. And he has a very strong background in accounting finance that, you know, more over skill, that I think is going to be a good fit for the Board of Review. So, Rich.
Thank you. Strange being sitting here after a couple of years, but good to be back. Thank you, Mayor, for the recommendation for the appointment. I am somewhat semi-retired. I still hold an interest in one of the other operating companies we have, but I thought it's time to give back a little bit. So that's why I sent a note out. I think some of you, if you haven't read the application, I wasn't alder for 12 years. So with that, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer anything.
Any question, comment?
No? Okay, so...
Thanks.
All those in favor of approving Richard Blunkquist for the Board of Review, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for serving again, Richard, okay?
Thanks, and thanks to all of you. Appreciate it. Can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
Watched the council meeting of last two weeks ago. In all, I think, all the 12 years I sat where you sat, I've never abused the way some of you were last two weeks ago. Sad that it had to happen. So I would have come that night, but I also have Badger basketball tickets, and that was a game night, and I rarely miss that. So thank you for putting me off for two weeks as well. So with that, thanks, and I look forward to serving. I printed off the job description today, so at least I know what I'm supposed to do. So thanks again. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Richard. Talking about appointments, there are going to be a couple of, you know, opening in April 2024, so I inviting the people that are watching, if you have people that you want to recommend. We're going to have a... I was seeing almost all the commissions, some opening. So especially, I will need more people in the Board of Reviews. And I am looking for people with the skill that they are appraisal or have some background in law, especially in real estate. So if you know anyone in your district, please recommend it to apply. We will need those type of skill in the Board of Review for this year, okay? Okay. So next we're moving to the consent agenda.
Before you move on from that, can we get a list of all the openings that are going to be coming up in April?
Yeah, I will.
Yep. It's my to-do list.
Yeah.
Now, just more for the public, the Board of Review meets kind of less frequently than than other boards.
Usually they meet from May to, I don't know, August, you know? It depends. September. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. So I think you're going to send the list to... You can send it to the council. You know, remember that the mayor is the one who is doing the recommendation, okay? So... Okay. So we move to item number five for the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. So next we move to the administrative report.
Good evening, everyone. Got a number of items here that I'll cover during the report. Many of you have probably noticed that the traffic signals at Lacy Road and Sine Road remain flashing. Engineering continues to work with other partners to resolve that issue, and we are currently anticipating that issue to be resolved in March. Hopefully, that does come to fruition so that those traffic signals are functioning as we hope they would during the installation process. Some voting information. Postcard notifications will be arriving in some mailboxes within the next two weeks related to polling location changes for wards number 12, which is on the east side of the city and largely in the Teravessa area. Their polling location will be changing to the Doxa Church. In Ward 19, which is on the west side of the city and near the Seminole Highway area, their polling location will be changing to Black Hawk Church. So again, card notifications will be going out within the next two weeks to those affected voters.
Weren't they already voting at Doxa Church?
Not in Ward 12. They were previously voting at the community center.
Oh, okay.
We made that adjustment, actually council approved that adjustment last year based upon the numbers of registered voters in those polling locations. So we had significant lines, as you recall, at the community center and fire station one. So this was one way that staff recommended to council that we can hopefully address that for future elections.
All right.
Additional election information. In-person absentee voting will begin here at City Hall on March 19 through Friday, March 29, weekdays only during business hours. You may notice, probably not when you came in, but the front counter remodel project that was approved by council began this week. Some cabinets were removed. The fascia was remaining in place on the countertop while additional counters are made. So we anticipate additional work happening later in March or early April to continue the work on that particular project. The council has received a couple of emails recently regarding rent increases, particularly in the Southdale neighborhood. I know Alder Allen, you had identified some information and shared with one of those residents, and then I had compiled some additional information from assessing and finance and shared that with council as well. So if anyone has any questions, by all means, feel free to reach out to me, the assessing staff, or finance staff with anything related to that.
Is it okay if I just comment on it? And this is more for the public. So for context, a rental... A renter reached out and said that their landlord had written them a letter basically saying that their rent had gone up, what, $200 a month? And basically blamed it on the city for increasing taxes. And I think the message that Alder Allen wrote back was really informative. And I just want to say that if people feel like they're being preyed upon or that they're getting inaccurate information from their landlords, to please inform the council of that. And although the city has limited capacity, what we can do, I feel like it's something that should be brought to the public attention, and maybe there's some advocates out there that can kind of help address that issue as well.
Thank you. Few more items. The Finance Department was recently recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association and awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending in 2022. Yes, 2022. I know they're a little bit behind. The ARPA-TID Closure Investment Plan amendments are due to the Finance Director, Misty Dodge, tomorrow at 4:30 PM. Please use the electric form previously provided by Misty, and I will also share that via email with council this evening, so you have that in the event you wish to submit an amendment for consideration. The city staff has been assessing the proposals that we receive for the strategic plan request for proposal that was sent out. In total, the city received 13 proposals from vendors across the country. We narrowed that process, the proposals, down to three, and we have conducted interviews with all three of those vendors, and we are beginning the process of some final conversations with what's likely to be the selected vendor. It's likely that you will hopefully see a contract with said vendor for the March 12 council meeting. And then finally, we'll talk more about this tomorrow evening during the Committee of the Whole with an update on the referendum. But I do at least want to mention at this point in time that the survey related to the referendum that is being sent to all residential addresses in the city of Pittsburgh is anticipated to arrive on or about March 6. And that survey will be open until March 22, and residents can complete that survey either by filling out the paper copy that's mailed to their house and turning it into the city clerk or mailing it to the address provided, or they can use the code that is on the survey and go online, enter that code, and complete the survey online. Additional copies of surveys will be available for Pittsburgh residents over the age of 18 by contacting the city clerk or coming to City Hall. Any questions from you?
I think you might have mentioned it over email. Are there... Does the survey also include language in Spanish?
Yes. Alternative languages will be available. We'll actually have... If you go online using the code that's mailed to the residents, you can actually complete this survey in Spanish online, and then we'll also have some printed copies available here at City Hall.
Are the instructions on the mailed copies in multiple languages as well?
It is in Spanish in addition to English.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
You want to mention the Benvenuto event? The Pittsburgh Chamber event?
Oh, yeah, I can do that. Is that Thursday?
Yeah.
Is that at 4:00?
No, Benvenuto.
Benvenuto.
Thank you for reminding me of the chamber event this Thursday. Business After Four event, Benvenutos.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. So next we are moving to commission and committee's report. We are going to start with Plan Commission.
I'll move approval of Resolution R 3924, approving Comprehensive Development Plan Request, CDP 253124, by Ravine Shaw, Agent for SFMA Deals LLC, to amend the Orchard Point Comprehensive Development Plan to allow the construction of a 100-room hotel in the Orchard Point Development on property located at the corner of Limestone Lane and Nesbit Road.
Second.
Okay. Did Plan Commission approve?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is... I think I did mention this in my report, but this is a new 100 hotel room... 100-room hotel, Spring Hill Suites, which is kind of like a business-oriented hotel room, and it's going to be across the street from the Staybridge Suites. It's the... From the Staybridge, it's the same developer and hotel operator. Basically, what this is, is we need to update the comprehensive development plan in the area, and to... In order to allow for this, there's two things that need to be updated. Number one is a change in the weekday traffic trips, an increase in the traffic trips that's allowed. This is not a concern by staff. I think it's definitely within the... The space can handle it, so they're not concerned about that. And then the other change is it reduces the overall impervious surface from 35% to 20%. The planning staff is also okay with this. They said that this is more in line with kind of a more densely... densely developed area, which is what this area is. So this first step is the CDP update. Assuming this passes, the next steps will be a conditional use permit, followed by an architectural design review. And this did pass unanimously in Plan Commission.
Any comment, question? Okay. Dave, okay, go Dave first and then Bill.
Just a question. You know, on the... We're constrained on our stormwater pipe to gain water from, you know, the neighbor... My neighborhood down to the Goose Lake, and that may affect development of... Development of the quarry property as this... As staff assess that, you know, the reduced hard surface there and its contributions that, you know, may limit development on the other side of McKee Road.
Okay. We have, yeah, now that... Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I can try to answer that. The Public Works has reviewed this. This site has always been planned for development, so this isn't unexpected, and the slight increase in impervious service isn't going to change the required stormwater infiltration requirements or requirements to keep stormwater on site. So long and short of it is, Public Works has reviewed it and does not see any issues at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, I was thinking along those same lines. Have they considered a turf parking lot or other, you know, sort of permeable surface as the parking lot? There's an awful lot of surface parking there.
Yes, there is. And the... Based on their requirements for Spring Hill Suites, they need to be at about one parking stall per hotel room. They do have over 20 parking spaces underground, so which is a little bit unusual in this situation. And there... We're not at a point where we have discussed the actual materials. I don't think a turf kind of stove... A turf approach is going to work, just given the amount of traffic and use and the snow, but I'm certain that we can explore some more permeable pavements in some parts of the development as we go through the process.
I have one more question.
Okay. Go ahead.
Is this strictly hotel, or is there going to be any commercial on the bottom floor or anything?
I believe there's a restaurant on the ground floor. Is that...
I believe they do plan to have a small restaurant and some smaller meeting rooms. It's not a major conference facility, and no, there's not like separate retail or commercial.
Any other question, comment? No? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution R dash 39 dash 24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval of Resolution R 4124, approving final plat request, FP 253424, by Michelle Burse, Agent for Pittsburgh Lands LLC, to approve a final plat for the fourth addition to Teravessa to allow the subdivision of 118 lots, including 109 buildable lots in the Teravessa neighborhood.
Second.
Okay. Did Plan Commission approve?
Yes.
Okay. What is this?
So this is the fourth major addition to the Teravessa neighborhood. The third addition is nearing completion, so this is the step in order to continue the expansion of that neighborhood. There is one more area for... There will be a fifth addition in the full plan of the neighborhood. We did have some discussion about the roads, how the roads will change over time, making sure the roads are going to be able to accommodate public transit and the other considerations, but ultimately, it's pretty straightforward, and we're going to be building some more homes out in District Three.
So there are going to be single-family lots, and there are going to be two outlots for townhomes, is that... Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any question? Yes, Jay?
Yeah. As I was looking at the map, Deanna, I saw we have all these outlots that are kind of running in between the backyards. Are these going to be some kind of alley or something? Who's going to be responsible for maintaining those? How does that work?
Okay. So yes, these are all... These single-family lots are alley lots, so the garages are to the rear and access through the alleys, and then the front doors will be out on the public street. The alleys are maintained and owned by the homeowners association.
Okay.
Any other comment, question? Bill?
I noticed some verbiage in here that says that there was a passageway originally required to meet the block perimeter standards for T5, but it's now T4. What's the history of and the reasoning behind downzoning that?
Deanna?
So, you know, I'm not... This even goes back before me. So the... Maybe in the original, early, early, like more like seven, eight years ago, the idea might have been to have some more T5. At this point, Teravessa has not been able to develop all of its T5 right now. It moves pretty slowly. And so the thinking was that the demand for housing was more important, so T4 fits better that meets those needs for new housing.
Any other comment? No?
Well...
What?
I don't know. I guess, you know, once you put a detached, single-family home on a piece of land, you've tied that piece of land up forever. And I don't... My personal feeling is that that's, you know, very inefficient land use, and I guess if I had my way, it would still be T5, but...
Maybe addition, the fifth addition.
Maybe.
Okay. Any other comment? All those in favor of Resolution R dash 41 dash 24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. So next we move to the Board of Public Works. So who is going to be doing it?
I'll move approval of Resolution R 0624, Final Assessment Resolution for 2023 Sidewalk Replacements.
Second.
Did the Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Finance Committee?
Yes. The Finance Committee approved.
Okay. What is this, Dave?
Well, these were the sidewalk replacements that were completed in 2023. We had a public hearing on the assessment, on the assessments. One resident came last time, and we discussed with him with the depth of the sidewalk, and I believe Ross was able to accommodate him. We were able to do this work at a... We feel a very, very cost-effective rate from this vendor, and the quality, we believe, is high. And again, this is pretty boilerplate. We go through this whenever we do sidewalks, so...
Okay. Any comment, question? Bill?
I'll just throw in there that the original estimate was going to be $25 per square foot for five-inch-thick concrete and $30 per square foot for seven, and it came in at 12 and 1/2 and 13, so this was basically half price.
Did they do a good job? Yeah?
Yeah. Public Works staff says everything was done well.
Okay. Good to know. Okay. So any other comments, question? No? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution R dash 06 dash 24, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. So next one.
Move approval of Resolution R 1824, releasing a public water main easement in Lot 3 of Certified Survey Map 13261.
Second.
Did the Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Plan Commission?
Yes.
Okay. What is this?
This was originally... We had this easement for a feed to the Sub-Zero plant, but we were able to loop it coming in another direction, so this easement is no longer needed.
Okay. Any comment, question? All those in favor of Resolution R dash 18 dash 24, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Next one.
I move approval of Resolution R 3224, amending the 2023 Water Utility Budget PSC Rate Case.
Second.
Did the Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Yes. The Finance Committee approved.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. What is next? This.
So our cost to get the PSC, get this rate case through, the PSC was higher. They asked more questions, mostly related to... Mostly related to the new tower. And so it took longer and more budget to get through the rate case what we were charged. So that's what this... That's why we are amending the water budget for this increased cost.
Any question, comment? No? All those in favor of Resolution R dash 32 dash 24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. So next we are moving...
Mayor, can I add something to the Plan Commission report?
Oh, yes.
If that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was a long meeting, so...
Yes. So just a couple of things that we discussed that won't come back to council. The staff did a neighborhood plan update. Overall, the messages that the two plans are tend to be planned to be completed in November of 2024, November of this year. There is a survey currently open for the South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan, so encourage you to take the survey. And also, we saw two things. The first was we did an ADR for Sunnyside Solar Farm. It's a new solar farm, a utility scale solar farm similar to the O'Brien off of Wayland Road, and that did get approved. It's going to be 20 megawatts, and they actually have batteries on site, so they can provide off... They can provide evening power from the solar arrays, which is interesting, and we have not seen in solar developments here yet. It's going to be part of the MG and E grid. And then last second thing is we did a pre-application for Artist Lofts, which is this interesting project off of Index Road, kind of a mix of commercial and residential, but the focus will be on artists, like artist spaces. So it's a really... It's in the early phases, but we had an initial discussion about it, and more will be coming in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. So next we move to Park Commission.
We really don't have anything, you know? We've had resolutions that have come forward, but the Parks Commission approved, so really nothing since the last time, or we meet next week on Thursday.
Okay. Thank you. Library Board?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Commission on Aging Well?
No report.
RCC?
We had a... At our last meeting on... Which day was it? February 12th, we had a discussion about the cardboard drop-off with some cost estimates for how much it actually costs per year to maintain that facility. Generally speaking, the cost is about $49,212 per year is the estimate. So I guess the discussion was how do we... We're obviously... We're taking in a lot of cardboard at that site. What do we do? Do we want to change it to shorter hours at staffed? The estimate was, you know, if you wanted to do 10 hours a week, that's about, you know, $13, $14,000 a year, and obviously limit the amount of hours. We just kind of had an initial discussion about what that looks like. I think we'll have to have a discussion as a council about what we want to do with that site. We are going... Doing a new contract for recycling services going into this year, so as we discussed with Pelletary, you know, that'll be part of the discussion and something that we can consider. The other element that we talked about was we currently have unlimited curbside recycling, which means that anyone that fills up their cart can just put any recyclings in a plastic bag and set it aside, and Pelletary will take it. So that costs about $75,000 a year, but we... It only serves... I think it's only... It's used pretty limited, not very many people utilize it. So there was discussion about the possibility of eliminating that, and then maybe explaining to the public that there are ultimate options, like you can actually upsize to a bigger cart, or you can get a... can actually upsize to a bigger cart, or you can get a second, and up sizing is free, but you can get a second cart for a small fee. It's an annual fee. It's like 20 or 30 bucks. You can get an entire second recycling cart. But Pelletary certainly would be interested in eliminating that part of the contract, because the drivers have to get out of the car in order to collect those, which, and they don't love when the drivers are in and out of the car for safety reasons. So, that's also, was a discussion. And then, we also had to talk about leaf collection. You know, I think you all know there's been issues with leaf collection. Pelletary also does that for us, and they also don't love doing it for us, because we're the only municipality that do it. So, we talked about what it would cost to do a vacuum truck. Obviously, the capital cost would be somewhere in the $200 to $300,000 range, plus we would need to staff it for probably a couple of months over the course of eight weeks or so, in order to get the entire city over the course of that, the weeks that we're collecting leaves. So, anyway, that's, you can get that vacuum truck is about $200,000, $300,000. There's also a trailer-mounted leaf collector, but that requires two staff to run it, and that's about $50,000 to $80,000 capital cost. So, something that we should maybe consider for CIP if we want to move into a, and obviously, the benefit of that is not just that, it might be more convenient for our residents, but they don't have to bag the leaves. They would just have to put them at the curb, and we suck them up. So, obviously, it eliminates plastic bags in the process, which has some benefits. So, that is, so we had some pretty extensive discussion about all those things, and that is my report. Thank you.
And what about the event in April?
Oh, thank you. Yes, we have, thank you. We have dates for, oh my gosh, we have dates for, the spring waterway cleanup is tentatively scheduled for April 20th, and then the recycling, I don't know, I can't find it.
Okay. You can mention that in your other report?
Yeah, I'll do all the report. Thanks.
Thank you. TTC? Who's TTC? Oh.
Right. Mayor, before you move on?
Yes.
Adam Mayor. Gabriella, we spent a lot of money on a camera at that recycling site. You know, my experience, I spend a fair amount of time down there, and people are coming in with the cardboard, and about half of them are from Madison. And, you know, I tell them if I catch them there again, it's going to be a ticket. Do we issue, you know, I guess a question for Tim. Are we issuing any tickets? You know, our site is being used by, by that cardboard. We're paying to have Madison people dump their cardboard off. And I, it just, it makes me mad, because we can't, you know, you do anything in Madison, you're not from Pittsburgh, they're going to throw the book at you, and we, it's almost like we're inviting them, inviting them down here. That's all I want to say.
And we do notice if they are from out of the city. So, the cameras have helped, but we do still get people from outside the city, and then they, they do get issued a citation for that.
They do. You are issuing citations. All right, good. Thank you, Tim. Thank you.
How do we do it, you know?
Sorry, just clarifying question. How can you tell that some, so they do license plate verification?
Yes, the license plates, the camera gets the license plate on the vehicle. I mean, you can look at that.
Yes. TTC met on February 8th. City Transportation Engineer Ross Kaler has been attending the MPO meetings, and the urban area boundary within the, within the Greater Madison MPO is updated once after each census year, and that's, that's happening now. And South Stoner Prairie and Greenfield are now part of that urban area boundary inside. And that is the area that is eligible for the Surface Transportation Block Grant, so that's kind of important. He's also been attending BRT meetings. There will be another round of public meetings for that. Coming down Fish Hatchery, no, Fish Hatchery Road, we'll be having center-running bus lanes, which is almost certainly going to mean a loss of on-street bike lanes. The Intercity Transit RFP closed on January 17th, and there were no respondents. So, Ross said he's got a pool of respondents from other RFPs. He's going to try and grab somebody to do that study for us. Nobody bit, apparently, the scope and/or the budget was just too small for people to bother with. The Bike Committee is becoming the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, and Ross will be the staff contact for that. So, I think that means he's going to replace Phil Groupie.
Chad, can I explain what is the next step for that?
That's news to me.
What?
Because...
Surprise.
Then, then maybe...
Because you are going to see, there is an ordinance change that, you know, I just finalized with Baller today, so you will see that coming through council, and then we have to go through the logistic.
Okay. I'm working off of notes that are several weeks old.
I'm not aware of a staff contact change there. What may happen is, we may utilize Ross and the transportation perspective a bit more regularly as it relates to bicycle and pedestrian-related matters.
Okay.
Just clarifying question. If the scope of the committee is expanded, will that mean membership is expanded as well, or?
No.
No. We'll keep the same number of members. I think it's at seven currently. So, yeah.
This is something that when it comes for, to you review, you can, you know, modify, increase, or whatever you want to do. Okay. Any other?
Yeah. So, the, we discussed at the meeting the Safe Systems Roadway Design Hierarchy, which is basically a methodology for reducing injuries and deaths. So, there are several parts to it. One is removing conflicts, so physically separating different modes of travel, reducing vehicle speed, speed kills, managing conflicts in timing. So, that could mean things like leading pedestrian intervals at crosswalks, so that pedestrians get the signal before the light turns green, that sort of thing. And then, increasing attentiveness and awareness, which can mean anything from rumble strips to speed boards and that sort of thing. And that is the end of my report.
I have a question.
Yes.
When is, do you know when is the next flashlight, it's going to be installed on the Seminole Highway, the second, what is that?
The RFB at, for the cannonball as it crosses Seminole Highway. Yeah.
I don't know.
Go ahead, Chad.
So, we believe we've identified a funding source for that, so you'll be seeing a budget amendment forthcoming.
Okay.
And if I remember right, that's going to be in the neighborhood of 15K.
Okay, okay. Yes, okay. And, okay. That's it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Seda? Who's going to talk?
Go ahead, Joe, if you'd like.
Sure. There were a lot of items on our agenda. Let me pull it up, because I wasn't prepared. Give me a second. We met last Thursday. So, let me just take a look at the agenda so that I can recall. Randy, do you want to step in on any specific items while I'm looking it up?
Well, one item that I'd like to speak to, or actually, the, Mike Zimmerman and Joyce, Joyce Frye, had asked us to bring back to council, they sat in on a WIDA Affordable Housing Program, and evidently, there are some obstacles that they're encountering in order to participate in that program. And the request is to bring it back to maybe a committee of the whole, so we could have a discussion, and to identify those obstacles and remove those obstacles, so that we could, we as a city can move forward with the WIDA Affordable Housing Program. So, I'm not going to go into all the list of what those obstacles are, to be quite honest. I just don't remember them all, but there are quite a few. So, I don't know, Jay, if we could maybe put that on a possible committee of the whole, and we could work with Seda.
Sure. Send me, send me an email.
Sure.
We have only two committees of the whole left for this council, so.
Okay. But my understanding is, it's rather important, otherwise we miss out on some real, no, no, I'm not, we're going to miss out on some, some serious funding if we don't, as a council, don't move the city forward. Yeah. That's what I have.
Oh. Hello? He fixed it. I thought it was good. So, there's a candidate forum at the Hop House on March 6th. So, there's a couple contested races on the council, so that'll be at the Hop House, and I don't have the time on it, but 11:30? Yeah, 11:30 AM. So, this is all I've got, apart from kind of some of the standard updates that, that are usually given in SEDA.
Okay. Thank you. Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee?
Yes, we discussed the conditional use permitting and the ADR for the Sunnyside Solar Farm, which was Alder Gerhardt's mentioned earlier regarding the Plan Commission. So, Ag and Rural approved both of those, the conditional use and the ADR. So, and there was some discussion on the farmland preservation zoning, but a majority of the time was spent on those two items that I just mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Bicycle Committee?
So, council received an email from Steve Arnold about this, but there were a ton of kind of highlights of Pittsburgh cycling in the Wisconsin Bike Fed Newsletter. One of them that I'll highlight in particular is that the League of American Cyclists announced the Bicycle Friendly America Program Awards for Bike Friendly Businesses. There were 48 Wisconsin businesses included that demonstrated a commitment to building a more welcoming atmosphere for cycling employees, customers, and the community. One particular business in Pittsburgh that was featured was the Avante Properties for their new Silver Level Award. Another thing to highlight was that Steve actually got an article in there about highlighting Pittsburgh's 40-plus miles of off-road multi-use path that connect the city. So, it was good to see that highlight. And then, there's an event on March 2nd. It's a fundraiser at Trek Bicycle Madison West. It's called Have You Got What It Takes to Beat the Barnes? And it's a fundraiser for the Alzheimer's Association. If you ride faster than former Lieutenant Governor Mandela Barnes, then I think there's some sort of award that comes with that.
Okay, thank you. EMS?
Nothing to report.
Healthy Neighborhood Committee?
Oh, we have something to report. We received 15 applications for the HNI program, and there's one of the applications that may not be valid, because they haven't submitted their 501(c)(3) information yet. But we will, at our March 6th meeting next week, we will be taking presentations from all the applicants, so they can tell us why they should be awarded the grant. Shortly after that, the committee will make its evaluations, and it'll get sent on to the council. So, hopefully, this will be on track for the council to approve the grants at the April 9th meeting.
Alder Allen, I don't know if you have this info on hand, but do you know how many of the applications were from Southdale?
I did. But I haven't looked at that thing in a while. Give me a second here.
I think we received, the council received information from Deanna. Yes, with all of that information.
Or it might have been sent.
Or to the Healthy Neighborhood.
It may have just been sent to Healthy Neighborhood, it's the Advisory Committee. I'll see if we can grab that and forward it off to the council.
Yeah, I'd have to open up each one of these applications, because there's, they're not sorted by neighborhood. But, I mean, we, it's, a lot of people who have, a lot of the organizations have applied in the past, and we've got a couple of new ones. So, I'm looking forward to seeing what, what we can do. And, you know, the additional funding that the council provided for this program will definitely be used. So, on behalf of the committee, I'd like to thank the council for approving that.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Housing Advisory Committee?
That's me again, and I will go ahead and make a little amendment to my previous comments about, from the TTC meeting. Ross's actual statement was that he will be attending some of those Bike and Pedestrian Committee meetings as the Public Works representative, but he is not replacing Phil as the staff contact.
Good to know. I sleep tonight.
Yes. Didn't want to cause Chad any upset stomach. Yeah, Housing Advisory Committee met on February 12th. We had a presentation from WIDA, as mentioned by Randy, and they told us about three low-interest loan programs available to Wisconsin municipalities. There is one called Vacancy to Vitality, which, if you're converting vacant or underutilized commercial properties into housing, you can get a loan for that at 3% or 1% if it's for senior housing, max loan amount of $1 million or 20% of the project cost. There is also a second program, Restore Main Street. This is for rehabilitating second and third-floor rental housing that exists over the top of commercial or retail space. This is, again, a 3% loan, maximum loan amount of $20,000 per unit. And I don't know that Pittsburgh will be able to take advantage of either of those to any great extent. There is a third option available that perhaps we can. That's the Infrastructure Access Loan, and that covers the cost of infrastructure related to workforce housing or senior housing. And again, it's, it's a 3% loan, 1% if it's for senior housing. The maximum loan amount is the total of the infrastructure cost, or 20% of the development project cost. Yeah, so, this was also discussed then at SEDA. Phil Groupie presented the draft of the Sustainability Plan, and, you know, we talked about the intersection of sustainability and housing and transportation. Joyce Frye has received a final memorandum regarding the rent-to-own townhouse project. That's being reviewed with city staff, and we should expect to see something at a council meeting regarding that coming up fairly quickly here. Olivia Perry is going to be giving an update on the regional housing strategy at our April or June Housing Advisory Committee meetings. She also notes that the county is hiring a housing specialist.
And we are hiring one, too.
Exactly, yes. And we should be getting an update, a report on the, and possibly a contract for the Efficiency Navigator Program at our April meeting. That, again, is the energy efficiency upgrades to naturally occurring affordable housing.
Well, okay. Good to know. Thank you. Landmark Preservation Commission?
No report.
Okay. Tree Advisory Committee?
Okay. I have a couple of things. So, we got a $5,000 grant from the Alliant Energy Grant. Arbor Day is going to be April 26th, I believe. They're going to be planting on the 27th here on the campus, and then one of our local parks, but I do not remember the name. I will tell you that next month, in the next couple of weeks. And I do believe we just applied for a $50,000 grant for the Healthy Neighborhoods, and we should find out if we get that grant in September.
Okay. So, yeah, so I know that Anna is working on a couple of events for April. Yeah.
Clarifying, what's the grant for in relation to the Tree Advisory Committee? Do you know?
There's two. So, the Alliant one, or the?
The Healthy Neighborhoods. Is that, is that related to the HNI grant?
I think...
Or this is something completely different?
I think it's related to that one.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure. I'll find out more about it.
Do you know anything about the $50,000? Do you know anything about the $50,000?
I haven't seen it come through OnBase yet. I know Ana had mentioned that there's consideration for applying, and I think that might be coming through the DNR, if I recall correctly. And that would allow us to plant trees and assist with our urban tree canopy.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, Shannon? No? Okay, thank you. Then, do we have anything for the Police Facility Oversight Committee? I don't think so.
No update.
No, no update. Next, we move to the standing committees and reports, and we are going to start with Finance Committee. So Randy?
Very good. I move approval of Resolution R-23-24, adopting the 2025 through 2034 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
Also known as the CIP Schedule.
Okay. Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Okay, so this is, what is this, Randy, the regular?
This is the, we see this every year, but it's the resolution provides the schedule to be used to accomplish adoption of the city's 2025 through 2034 Capital Improvement Plan. So this is the schedule that comes out every time this year.
Any question, comment? No? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-23-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So next one.
I move approval of Resolution R-29-24, Police Department Purchase of Body-Worn Cameras.
Second.
Did the Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Okay, what is this, Randy?
Well, we have the Chief Morales on line. I think he would like to speak to this.
Okay. Chief?
Basically, the Police Department, hello everyone. The Police Department's body-worn cameras have reached their life expectancy and are due for replacement. Replacement is necessary in order to maintain the most reliable equipment, good quality videos, and stay current with software updates. So the total amount would not only include replacement of cameras, but it would also include updated software that would allow for syncing videos between squad and camera as well as easier to do video redaction if needed.
Thank you. Any comment, question? Jay?
Yeah, just one question, chief. How long do we retain the videos, just as standard practice? I know there's some that we might have to maintain longer than others, but in general, like if there's no public requests, how long do we hang on to that information?
I believe video is kept for, what is it, 100 days? And if it gets plagued, then it stays on there indefinitely.
Okay.
Or statute of limitations, I should say.
Any other question, comment? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-29-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. So next, we move to the next one.
All right, the next one. I move to approve Resolution R-31-24, authorizing payment to Axley for outside legal services in 2024.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
The Finance Committee approved.
Okay, what is this, Randy? And we have Valerie also on the screen.
Valerie, would you like to speak to this item, or?
I'm happy to answer questions if you have any, but just very briefly, I can let you know that this resolution authorizes the payment of outside legal counsel services for our labor counsel, which is with Axley Brunelson. So that covers any kind of union contract negotiations which we'll have coming up this year, as well as any kind of issues that might arise with employment relations that involve the union.
Okay, yeah. Any question, comment? No? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution R-31-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, so next, we move to Personal Committee. Gabriela?
We met on February 20th for a pretty eventful meeting. We first added the classification of police captain and police shift lieutenant to the, you know, to the list of jobs in the city. The police captain is a new management tier in the pay plan, but it's actually, the two new captains are actually doing basically the same work that they've been doing all along. They're just now getting the proper pay and recognition for it. Adding the police shift lieutenant is also a step towards the long-term staffing plan. So in the future, the plan is to hire first one shift lieutenant that would take a late evening to early morning shift and provide that support to the sergeants. And then in the future, the plan is to have three shift lieutenants that can cover each of the shifts, and so that those lieutenants can deal with the kind of the immersion issues in the sergeants, and the captains can focus on more of the higher-level work. In the interim, the captains are continuing to kind of do some of that lieutenant duty until the department can kind of fill out its staffing plan over time. And then after we did that, we promoted the two lieutenants to captain. That changes immediate, but they're probably having a ceremony at a later date, probably in March. And then we also added a Housing Initiatives and Programs Specialist Position, approved a pay plan, a pay grade, and a position description, and it will be posted pretty much right away. We're hoping to have someone in early spring that is a person that will report to the Economic Development Department, to Mike Zimmerman. Then we also added a Community Development Specialist Position, pay grade, and the position description was what was discussed. It is going to be part of the Planning Department and reporting to Deanna. And, yeah, so there's like potentially, these positions could shift in the future, but for now, that's where they're housed. And same with that one, they're going to post it right away and hopefully have someone in early spring. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any question for Gabriela? No? Okay. Public Safety and Human Services?
No report. Our meeting was canceled.
Okay, thank you. Finished Businesses? We don't have anything. So we move to New Businesses. We have a direct referral. Randy?
All right. I move approval of Resolution R-38-24, approving order number one for legal services with Cybeau Law Offices.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this, Randy?
Well, Fitchburg Pines Fairway Apartments and Fitchburg Apartments filed a lawsuit related to their tax assessment claiming, claim, which was dismissed earlier by the Fitchburg Board of Reviews. The city retained Cybeau Law Offices for defense of this case. The initial anticipated budget was for $25,000. Due to the plaintiffs' attempts to expand the record and briefing and so forth, the city incurred additional expenses, and this resolution is asking for an additional $10,000 to cover those additional expenses.
Okay, thank you. Valerie, do you want to add anything else since you're there?
Since I'm here, sure. I just add that this case has now been resolved, and the city was ultimately victorious in the suit. So the city did prevail, and the case has been finished. I should add that that's for tax year 2022, so the property owners are engaging in a new challenge to their tax assessment for 2023, which is a different kind of case because that case wasn't dismissed by the board. And so that will, we will litigate that, and you'll see some more information about it in the coming months. But as far as this challenge, which was, it's called the Sursuriary Review, that challenged the dismissal by the board, the plaintiffs were alleging that the board was acted improperly when they dismissed their objection form, and ultimately, the circuit court agreed with the Board of Review that it was a proper dismissal.
Okay, thank you. Any comment, question? Jay?
Yeah, what is the, what is the funding source? I didn't see anything telling us where the money was coming from.
It's in the package.
Not in ours.
Yeah, it's in the whole package. I am looking at that.
Well, I don't have that page.
It's in the.
Maybe Agenda.
It's in the website, whole package. I don't know. Valerie, can you?
Misty's.
Okay, Misty.
So this is coming out of our insurance fund. So we have a separate internal service fund for insurance and risk management, and these core cases are out of there. And there is enough money in the budget to cover this little small cost.
Great.
Okay, any other questions? No? All those in favor of Resolution R-38-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So next, we move to Mayor's Report and Alder District's Report. So I have a couple of things that I want to share with you. First, you know, I want to make it clear, I have received a lot of question about residents, about what are the next steps for the police facility. So I have reached by community members and resident about what are the next steps. And, you know, I think we, the staff received the marching order from last council meeting. So what is the position is we have $35 million, no training bay, no shooting range. So the architects and engineers are working with Chad to determine how this, so if we are going to reduce the schematic design footage that we, it was presented to us, or we need to go back to the drawing board from scratch. So this one is going to be discussed, coming to you when we have more formal information. But, you know, my, as a mayor, I'm going to tell you that we are building this facility. We have $35 million, and I hope we move forward summer to the fall, we have go to the bidding process. So this is the, I want to clarify that to people that are watching, that we are moving forward with the building. Also, I had a couple of interviews. One was, I don't know, you're familiar with Univision, is a big Spanish channel, you know, broadcasting channel in the United States. And it was interesting, I had a, I was interviewed before I left to my trip. And then, and then last week, I have another interview talking about the city, my role in PBS Milwaukee, that I have a TV show in Spanish, so this is good news for the city. Referendum, as Chad mentioned, we continue working on the referendum. Tomorrow, we will have an update. The survey will be hitting the mailbox at around March 6th. And I think you received a package that Adam sent to all of us. Please read that information because they are very good talking point, because all of us, we need to be, you know, follow those, you know, talking point to be on the same page. So if someone tried to reach out and report it, please have those handy because it's a good guidance for you guys. So I recommend you, and also, there is another form there that maybe you're going to explain that tomorrow, isn't it?
Which one?
The one that, what we can say, we cannot say.
Yeah, we can cover it.
Okay, all right. The other thing I want to mention, we have a new interim chief of fire, Chad Grossen, was appointed by, you know, I recommended his, you know, his role, and then it was approved by the PFC last, when was it, last week? Yeah. Rob Kunse is going to be the Acting Emergency Management Director. So if you see them, please say thank you, because they are stepping out to help in the interim until we get our new fire chief. Also, I am, what I am doing is I'm meeting with the city chairs, with the chair of committees, the board chairs of commission that we have. I am meeting with them. I am, you know, having some meeting. It's good to know them. I have learned so many things about them, all the contribution. Some of them have been part of those commission and committee for many, many years. They have a very interesting profile and background. And also, because I want to know what are the 2024 goals for those commission and to see they are aligned with my goal for, you know, moving forward. Also, I was invited to participate as a Fitchburg representative in a community leader think tank organized by the Madison Metropolitan School District last week. It was, they asked about, you know, what are the long, how do we see the Madison School District, short and long-term goals, you know? And also, I want to mention, they are considering going to a referendum in 2024. So what else? And also, I attended the Delta Lab, Delta Beer Lab Five Years Party, so I went to congratulate them. They are part of Fitchburg now, so that's it for now. Okay, any question for me? Comment? No? Okay.
Just, I know you mentioned the interim fire chief. Have we ever announced in our, like, council meeting that Chief Paul Vermaeker is moving on? I just want to, like, say that officially to give context to people, so they're like, why is, why are we getting interim fire chief? But I don't know, if you want to mention it, or Chad, or Mayor?
Yeah, Chad, you can go. Yeah, thank you for prompting the context there, Aldo Maldonado. Yeah, the reason Deputy Chief Grossen was designated interim fire chief is because former fire chief Joe Pulvermacher accepted a position with the Menominee Falls Fire Department to be their fire chief. We thank Joe for his, I think, eight years of service to the city and his unwavering commitment and dedication. I know a handful of us were at his going-away recognition event last Friday at the Fire Department, and without getting too deep into it, because I don't want to speak for Joe, but I know that this was a difficult decision for him to make, and he struggled mightily with it, but at the end of the day, he felt that it was best for him, both personally and professionally, to accept the position in Menominee Falls. And again, we definitely thank him for his service, and thanks for the prompting of context.
Okay, maybe we were planning to mention that in the previous meeting, that we canceled all of this part.
Mayor, I just had another question about the police facility. I know that, you know, we had several public meetings kind of over the past few months, and obviously caused a lot of discussion and interest, but as we're kind of charging the architects with the next, like, making do with what they have, is there, are there going to be any opportunities for public input on the design of the facility? Because I feel like that may put us back in the same position as we did in terms of, like, what the design is going to look like and the fact that it hasn't really been informed by the community. I'm just worried about what the new components will have for this facility.
I think the component that the, you know, cannot, I think the component that the facility will have, they are, you know, they are all the components, they are part of the function of a police facility, but as I, I want to repeat again, the council already decided that we are not going to have a shooting range nor a training bay in this facility. So this is why we need to wait for the architect and engineer to determine what are the options that are going to be, and from there, I think we're going to have a better idea what are going to be the next step. Do you want to add something? Okay.
Yeah, Joe, I had this put on the committee of the whole agenda for tomorrow. So part of the, what I really want to get through tomorrow is, are we, is the $35 million a drop-dead number for the council? Is the council at all willing to go higher if something indicates that it needs to go higher? The other question that I want to really get some clarity on is, what is the process that we're going to go through to make this happen in the future? Because I think you're right, there's, there were a lot of questions about the lack of public input, the lack of council input, so I think we need to kind of clarify what the council's expecting out of the next process. So that'll be on our agenda tomorrow.
Thanks, Walter.
Okay, so next, Alder District Reports. I'm going to start from District 1, Joe.
Got a bunch of stuff. So there is a Community Resource Fair at the Boys and Girls Club this Friday, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on 4619 Gentleman Road. There is also an Ally Dunsmarsh Neighborhood Association Community Meal on Friday, March 8th, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:45 p.m., and that will also be at the Boys and Girls Club. So just a quick update. So just a quick update on the Teen Center project. The contracted vendors, Equity by Design, as well as JLA Construction and Hope Community Capital are starting to move forward with planning. And just of note, they are hiring young people to be interns, as they did with the last project, but kind of more strongly focusing on the neighborhoods that surround where the potential Teen Center will be. And last I checked, they've gotten 10 applications from middle and high school students, and most of them live in the area. So just kind of shout out to that team for their due diligence and outreach. Also, wanted to say that today is February 27th, and it's Dominican Independence Day for the Dominican Republic. So I've got three Dominicans in my household, so I just want to make sure I acknowledge that as well. And that's all I've got.
Dave?
Our community garden is, will be kicking off. We've had a couple new, new people. If you know anyone that's interested in a, in a plot, please get ahold, have them get ahold of me or Scott. We have, I think we have room for a few more. I was able to get three bikes for kids. Were able to give me 50 bikes again this year that I'll be distributing in District One. I haven't picked the date yet, I'm working with Mike Grady to have a combined event. And the last, a little off-topic, but I think appropriate, I work out of town a lot, and Sunday of last week, I was working, I was staying in a hotel in Savage, Minnesota. And I checked into the hotel, I got there late, it was about 10:30, and I could see the clerk was, she was kind of distraught, and I checked in, I said, what's wrong? And she said, my, one of my best friend's husbands was just, was just shot. And he was one of three police officers responding to a domestic dispute. And two 27-year-old officers with families and children were killed by the person, paramedic outside that was waiting, was killed, and the person killed himself. I'm pretty sure none of the yellow-clad people, you know, that were at council two weeks are shedding any tears or praying for the families like I am. But hesitate to think, you know, maybe some more, maybe training, maybe training might have, might have helped the situation, might have helped that situation, you know, four, four widows, or children, or three, three families with no fathers. You know, I hope you, I hope you're proud of the decision not to, not to put in the training center. I think it could only have helped our officers, that's all.
Thank you. District Two.
February 19th, there was an apartment fire up on Greenway Cross. No injuries, so that's good, but there were a couple families that were displaced. Of course, we all were scratching our heads about the Associated Bank robbery, and there was the, another bank robbery the same day. Apparently, the next day, Fitchburg PD and, well, several departments were able to catch the suspect, who is currently on supervision for previous conviction of bank robbery. Yesterday, there was a power outage that affected over 1,900 MG&E customers for about an hour. I was one of those. I was, a couple of my neighbors arrived home, and I convinced them to stop beating up their garage door openers. I saw a street sweeper out today, so that means it's spring, but don't worry, there's going to be snow tonight and a high of 25 tomorrow.
Hour, hour? In our, in our city, did you see that?
It went right past my house.
Oh, really?
This afternoon, yeah.
Oh. Okay, Gabriela.
So the, the Spring Recycling Event, as usual, our Spring Electronics Recycling and Confidential Shredding Event is going to be on Saturday, April 13th, from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. Again, that's Saturday, April 13th, from 8:00 to 11:00. One important note, there will be no med drop this year and for the foreseeable future because the Police Department is no longer doing med drop, and that was how we did it before. So it's just going to be electronics and confidential shredding on April 13th.
Are you looking for volunteers?
I, we haven't done the call yet, but if anyone wants to volunteer, you are always welcome. So please, let Phil, or Phil Groupie, or Ben Sheldt know.
Okay.
Thanks.
Hey, before you, before you stop talking, is there, is that the only event this year, or will there be two like there have been in previous years?
There will be a fall event.
There will.
We just have, I don't believe we've scheduled the date yet.
Thank you. District Three.
Yeah. Bill, I think the person that you mentioned who had been arrested for the bank robberies is the same person who died in the Dane County Jail on Friday. So, yeah, so there's no cause of death information that they've released yet, but. Anyhow, in District Three, I have a few Southdale things to bring up. The Parks Department is working with some of the landlords in the neighborhood on getting the community garden that is currently in Southdale that we now own, more organized than it's been. There's currently been one resident there, who's a long-term resident, he's lived there only over 20 years, and he's been kind of heading up, getting it done. But the Parks Department wants to kind of bring that into the fold with our other community gardens, so we're working on that. There's also some preliminary work that's been done on trying to organize what types of equipment we might have in the playground, in the new parks, equipment that the council allocated, $550,000 for, so that there's going to be some public input meetings that I think are going to happen in May. And then we were notified by the River Food Pantry. So the River does some food drop-offs in several Fitchburg neighborhoods. They go to the pines and the fairways and new fountains. And they started visiting Southdale last summer, and I went to a few of those food drop-offs. And there's, there's a lot of people who go, I mean, the, one of the times I was there, there was like 60-some people that showed up to get food, because, you know, they don't have a lot of money for stuff like that. So the River told us that they want to have a, a community outreach event in June, and it looks like they're inviting a lot, a lot of organizations. The Fitchburg Police Department's going to be there, reach Dane, Fitchburg Library, Briar Patch, and probably a few other organizations that they've reached out to. So it sounds like it's going to be a pretty big event, and that will be, there's, there's going to be something on the Park Commission agenda next week for park usage. So the council doesn't get to approve those, but it'll, just, just so you know that that's coming up. There've also been a number of comments about the flashing lights at Lacy and Sayen, because I thought that that light was going to be fully operational a few months ago, but apparently, it's not yet. And I, what I understand is that we're waiting on Wisconsin Southern to finish some analysis of the light timing and how all that's going to work. And that is all I had.
All right, thank you. Shannon?
No report.
Jim?
Yeah, the power went out, and across the street from me is a water tower that the Streets Department or Public Works at, they come out with a generator, I guess, to plug in an emergency pump. The other thing, Joe mentioned the increase in rents. There's an article in the ESMAS where there's a department complex on the west side of Madison, Hilldale, raised their rents 20% to 40%. You know, so this appears to be going on a lot of places. That apartment building actually collected signatures, and they were going to take it to a tenant advocacy group to see what can be done. So it looks like it's going to be widespread with the rent increases.
Randy?
Nothing to report.
Okay. So I want to mention two things before, I forgot to mention in my report, is, you know, that you receive an email about a press release that UW Health is going to build a rehab hospital in Fitchburg. So that one is great, it's going to be in uptown Fitchburg. And then the other thing is, they have, I have a meeting today with Chad and Adam, Adam is kind of in charge of the project. They have, is coming along, and you're going to see the bidding coming through, what is, in the next couple of March, isn't it?
Yeah, the bid docs are going to hopefully go out in the next month, and then ideally, it'll be coming back for council action, anticipated May 14th right now.
So this project is moving along. So, okay, announcement, next committee of the whole is tomorrow, and the next common council meeting is March 12th. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourning at 8:51. Thank you very much. Good night, buenas noches.